This is our regular board meeting, August 1st, 2024. Before we get started, if we could have introductions from the dais?
Chrissy Richel, Assistant Clerk.
Leslie Harvey, Clerk to the Board.
Stephanie Summerau-Dumas, Commissioner.
Jeff Aludo, County Administrator.
James Sayer, Legal Counsel.
There you go. County Commissioner Denise Dreehouse. I am going to make a motion to excuse Commissioner Reese.
Second.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summerau-Dumas?
Yes.
All right. We are going to start our meeting with silent prayer and then the pledge of allegiance. Please join me in silent prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the patriots of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and every being objective.
Going to make a motion to approve of the minutes of the previous session?
Second.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summerau-Dumas?
Yes.
Thank you. Do we have any public comments? Okay. There was just a yes from the hallway, but I think that was not meant for us. So we're going to move on. We'll go to comments and motions of the commissioners. Commissioner Summerau-Dumas?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a few things. And this will cover really from July 11th till today. The weekly White House briefing that I have, that's virtual. I attended that again. And of course, the NACO Annual Conference, I'm going to go way back because it's been a while. But that was very informative, had a great time, learned a lot about what's going on nationally for commissioners, and also met some fine people in Tampa, Florida. And as I came back, I had to review some treatment committee grants, about 15 of them as relates to One Ohio. And I completed that. Attended the convention center construction kickoff. And also, the next day, had a sound check for the Veterans Appreciation Day. And then that's when it hit me. I got COVID. Right after that, and I've been out and I'm back, and not quite 100%, but I'm almost there. I don't know if you want me 100%, but anyway. But anyway, really, my staff attended the Hamilton County Land Reutilization Board of Directors meeting. And the Hamilton County Veterans Appreciation Day certainly wanted Bishop Hilton to go there to represent my office because veterans are so important to all of us. And then the Black Music Walk of Fame, both my staff people attended that. So I want to thank them for making sure that our officers represented even though I wasn't there. Then the Hamilton County Change Court graduation ceremony was virtual, and I listened to that. And today, we had a treatment committee review meeting where we looked at preliminary allocations for those who had put in applications to receive money through the One Ohio grant. We have 4 million total, but I'm on the treatment committee. And so I think we were making some good decisions and moving right along. I also reviewed about 35 scholarship grants through CCAO, the County Commissioners Association of Ohio. Young people put in information about what they thought about commissioners and what commissioners do. And there were about, as I said, 35 scholarship applications. And I think they're going to pick about five young people. So I was glad to be a part of that. I also want to apply the Bengals for the locker upgrades. I've been speaking publicly about making sure that our players have what they need while they're playing and while they're over there and when they come with their family. I'm not saying that I was an impetus for that, but I have been speaking that we need to do more as I looked at that survey that came out. And so I'm also working with environmental person Tony Staubach as it relates to food waste. And the Reds and FC have already been involved with making sure that food that is left over, that they can contribute to our community, that they are doing so. So we are actively working with the Bengals to see if they can start that before the season starts. Oh, one last thing. Today is August 1st, and it is National Respect for Parents Day. Yeah, so if you haven't respected your parents, today is a good day to do it. So I just, it's just really strange, all the stuff they come up with, but I thought I would say that. And that ends my report.
I'm going to remind my children.
Okay.
I mean, I'll call my mom, but you know.
Yeah.
Thank you for that report, Commissioner. So I have a few things as well, because it's been a while since we met. We are meeting every other week, and as you said, you were out, so you even had a longer list. But I too wanted to highlight the veterans event that we had in collaboration with the VSC and the Reds and many, many partners that came down to the riverfront. We had a couple thousand veterans join, and we had, we had all kinds of things available for them to take advantage of as veterans. And so I thought that was a really nice event. Also went to the Black Music Walk of Fame induction ceremony. It was very well done, very well produced, and was happy to join at that event. Been a lot of events going on. And I went to the music festival too, which was loads of fun. So it's always fun, and there were thousands, of course, of people enjoying the evening at the music festival. Congratulations to the Sant Angelos for doing such a nice job on that. Also, on behalf of the commission, attended the Forbes 30 Under 30 event in partnership with Jobs Ohio and Forbes Magazine. It was really exciting to highlight young people in this community that are doing really cool things. And so we celebrated them. We had a lunch. It was really, it was really fun. And it's good to have young people involved in the work of the community, so that, I was happy to participate in that. And then also, the same day, Sundance was in. We are being considered for the Sundance Film Festival, which is loads of fun. Thank you to Kristin Schlotman and Film Cincinnati for having the vision, really, to say that if you're not going to be in Utah, pick Cincinnati. Why not? And so we're in the fifth round. It was a site visit. They went to all these different places that we, you know, that she took them to, to highlight Cincinnati. And I think they were, they were impressed with what they saw. I think we're, sometimes we're a little bit of a sleeper on these things, but I'm really excited about that. And Commissioner, maybe we'll get Sundance Film Festival here, and we'll be able to get to some of that. So that would be good fun. And then also, just two more things. I spoke at the Building Futures graduation ceremony. This is a partnership between the Urban League AFL-CIO, the county, the city, trying to make sure that people of color have access to construction jobs. Got a lot of construction going on in this community, and we really do need to intentionally build that pipeline. And so there were a number of graduates, I think there were like 15 or 20 of them, but it was fun to represent the commission at that event. And then the Change Court was yesterday. And I did want to say congratulations to Judge Russell. That court has been around for 10 years. And so it took some vision on the part of Judge Russell to say, "We need to provide extra care and consideration to the women that are entering the justice system who have suffered from human trafficking." And so she started the court 10 years ago. Judge Trotter-Brattin has it now. And it was, there were four graduates, and it's always a very emotional ceremony. So was able to provide proclamations to the graduates at the ceremony. So thank you to those judges for continuing the good work. So that's all I have. Administrator Aludo, you've got a lot of stuff.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. Just a couple of comments first. Also, just wanted to tack on to both of your comments about the veterans event. Had a chance to head down there myself, and just wanted to congratulate the Veteran Services Commission, the staff and the leadership over there for their work on this, as well as internally in our organization, Ann Centurly, Bridget Doherty, and others who, who worked really hard to make that a really great event the first time right out. So just wanted to thank them and congratulate them for great work. Also had the good fortune to be upstairs this morning and HR onboarding some new employees coming into the county, including nine, a class of nine new 911 call takers. So that's fantastic. So had the privilege of welcoming them into the, welcoming them into the organization along with some folks from new employees in county facilities, planning and JFS also. And as long as we're talking about new employees, also just wanted to mention that, I know the commissioners, if you have not already met, you will be meeting Ms. Emily Dalton, who is the county's new fellow. So just wanted to welcome Emily to the organization as well. With that, I do have, as you said, Commissioner, a robust slate of by leaves here.
Just to make a comment, you're talking about the 911 new employees.
I just wanted to make a personal comment because I just wrote a note to Andy Knapp that my understanding, the 911 employees that were on duty, I had a tragedy in my family, and a cousin ended up committing suicide. But I had heard about how great they were with him and how they tried so hard. And even during the SWAT situation, I almost did it, but sometimes you can't, you know, control that or... But I just wrote a note to him, just complimenting him and his staff on how hard I heard they, they worked. So just wanted to mention that.
Yeah, thank you. I'm really sorry to hear that. And yeah, they, they do a great job working with people on what is often the worst days of people's lives when they're calling in. So thank you for that, Commissioner. Just a few by leaves today. By leave number one, if, if the commission would just like me to go through all these. Or Commissioner, I didn't know if you wanted to introduce the board?
Yes, so this one is a resolution reappointing a member to the Earthworks Board of Appeal. This is Craig Abercrombie. He has served in the past, and we're grateful that he's willing to do it again. So I'll make a motion to approve of by leave number one.
Second.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summerau-Dumas?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. By leave number two is a resolution allowing the administrator to enter into a joint agreement between the board and Colrain Township for a 2024 community revitalization grant. This is in the amount of $28,000. Again, this is for a community revitalization grant, which is a board program to spur development, infrastructure redevelopment, and blight reduction in our first suburban communities. This one in particular relates to Colrain Township and relates to utility planning and demolition planning work for the Northgate Mall site. So we're happy to recommend the advancement of this to help participate in that program with Colrain. Colrain is also utilizing general fund dollars for this, for portions of this project. And I know they have a grant application in the state for the demolition costs as well. So with that, the administration recommends approval.
Do number three as well?
Happy to. By leave three is also a community revitalization grant. This is with the city of Loveland, Ohio, in the amount of $500,000. This is for the acquisition and demolition of vacant and blighted property on Loveland-Madura Road, which is also consistent with the city's master plan. The city of Loveland is also contributing $100,000 for additional demolition costs on this. And with that, the administration would recommend approval of both by leaves two and three.
Thank you. I just want to comment to these grants. I think this is, these are really important grants to the jurisdictions outside the city of Cincinnati. And it is our way of saying yes to partnership in all these jurisdictions. We've been doing this for about three years. I'm always gratified to see these on the calendar and to hear. I'm glad you went into some detail about what the projects are because these are really opportunities to revitalize communities, and I'm really proud of the partnership that we have. Commissioner Summerau-Dumas?
Exactly what I was going to say. This is about our third year, and this was the greatest idea to get this going. It's made a difference.
Very good. So I'm going to make a motion then to approve of by leaves two and three.
Second.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summerau-Dumas?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. By leave four is one on which the commission has been previously briefed. This is an amendment with our agreement with the port to allow for additional site readiness activities in the amount of $878,000. Again, the board has been previously briefed on this and does just relate to utility and site readiness planning work additionally in some of our first ring suburban communities. And the amount is $878,000. The administration recommends approval.
So Melissa is here from the port. Would you mind coming forward and just putting a little bit of meat on the bones here? Let us know where this site is. We have discussed it privately, but for the general public, I think people would like to understand.
Where the site is? What the, what the money is going to? What the money is for. So we appreciate your consideration of this. As you know, the port's mission is to revitalize underutilized, defunct property, putting it back into productive reuse. We've continued to do that throughout a number of properties in the city of Cincinnati, but primarily throughout Hamilton County. This site in particular is in Redding, Ohio. It had been environmentally impacted and partially demolished for a significant period of time. Had not had any economic tax generation since 2014. So we have the opportunity to further advance some site readiness on the property and make the footprint a little bit built, more buildable and larger to accommodate some prospective investment in... investment in reuse at the site. And think this will be a really significant turning point for the property to, in order to activate that and advance some opportunities we're seeing there.
Yeah. And the city of Reading, it goes without saying, is supportive.
Yes, they are. They, they did provide a lot of support, which I think maybe was shared prior with the commission. So they're highly supportive of it and have been a really significant partner all along from the school district to the administration and the economic.
And we thank them for their partnership.
Oh, yes, very much.
Yeah. And just to put this in context, so we have set aside $2 million for site readiness. This is part of that $2 million being extracted out and put to this purpose in Reading. So I'm thrilled that this one is moving forward as well. And Commissioner Summer Dimas, any comments related to this?
No comments on this.
Okay. I'm going to move that we approve of by leave number four.
Thank you.
Second. Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dimas?
Yes.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. By leaves five, six, seven and eight are all related to each other. So I'm going to describe them as a story here and then you can consider them in totality. These relate to the resolutions passed by the board to certify language to the ballot relating to the Developmental Disability Services Levy and the Family Services and Treatment Levy. The substance of these resolutions are all the same. What this amounts to essentially is a tweak to the verbiage in the resolution the board passed. State law now requires that the impact shown to the $100,000 home be reflective of the auditor's appraised value, as opposed to the, to the valuation of the house and, or of the property in, in total. So the new resolutions, resolutions here, which are items seven and eight, reflect the new state language. The old resolutions have the prior language that we've used in the past. So five and six are rescinding what the board had passed last time. Seven and eight are enacting the resolutions with the new language. But again, no substantive changes, or no changes at all to the, how this impacts what is on the ballot from a taxing perspective.
So it will not raise your taxes?
That is correct. There are still, there are still flat levies, et cetera.
Flat levies, that's right.
It's just, it's just a revision to the language to reflect how they need to appear via state law.
So yes, and just to, you know, capsulize it. So we're still providing these important services with no increase to the taxpayers. So, okay. So Commissioner Dimas, any questions?
No, no questions. Just a comment. When I was, when I, the one meeting I did miss, excuse me, I was not able to vote on these levies. And so I was so mad at home. So now I have the ability to show my support for the developmental disability and the family services levy. So I'm just really excited about it.
Second shot here.
Yes.
All right. Well, I'm going to move then to approve of by leaves five, six, seven and eight.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dimas?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. And by leave number nine relates to the, an appointment to the Hamilton County Hospital Commission. I don't know if you wanted to, if you want me to do that one, Commissioner, I'm happy to, or?
No, it's not on my.
Okay. This was a late add, I believe. By leave nine is a resolution appointing Dr. Stephen Fagans to the Hamilton County Hospital Commission. The administration recommends approval. Happy to answer any questions.
So we're very familiar with Steve Fagans, because he was the guy we relied on during COVID. He was a rock star during COVID, he and Greg Kesterman together. So I will happily put this one forward. Commissioner Summer Dimas, any comments?
Yeah.
Yeah, very good. All right. So I will move that we approve of by leave number nine.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dimas?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. No further by leaves.
Thank you to Dr. Fagans. All right. We have a public hearing, only a couple of minutes late. So this is a public hearing to consider the approval of amendment number two of PY 2021, Target of Opportunity, CDBG, CV application related to Lydia's house. And Steve is here to give us some detail.
Yes, Steve Johns, Assistant Director of Planning and Development. You've seen this project before. We were happy through COVID funds to get some state dollars down here to Hamilton County from the Ohio Department of Development. The project is underway. It's very close to being completed. There were some change orders, though, during the process of building the addition to Lydia's house in Norwood. And so we went back to the state and said, do you have any available money to help with those change orders? And they found $100,000 for us. So because of the financial change in the grant, we're required to have this public hearing, but we're grateful for those funds and the project is nearing completion. So thank you for this opportunity to have this hearing.
So to be clear, that fund, 100% of these funds are coming from the state?
That's correct.
Okay. How many units are being built here?
So this is interesting, because it's COVID-related money. They wanted a separate suite for folks that in case they happen to be sick, they could be isolated from other residents at the existing facility. And then there are two additional units as part of this. So it's very interesting, because the whole suite has its own kitchen, so folks can take care of themselves if they happen to be sick and not go to the main kitchen where they might expose others.
Great. Commissioner Summer Dimas, any questions?
This comment, Lydia's house provides great services to the community, so I'm glad we're able to help.
Yes, and I think they're looking forward to perhaps inviting you all to ribbon cutting at some point. They're really closing in. It's spectacular how it has unfolded. A great team working on the project and we're excited, and I think Norwood is as well, for this to be completed.
Thank you. All right. So are there any individuals here to comment during this public hearing? All right. Seeing none, I'm going to move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dimas?
Yes.
All right. Steve, could you tell us what our next steps are?
Yes, so this item has a resolution attached to it that's on the consent agenda. And so upon passing that.
All right. Why, Commissioner, with your deference, we're going to move item 37 to the front, so that we can go ahead and approve this one. All right. So I'm going to move that we approve of item 37 on the consent agenda.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dimas?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. Let's move into the regular agenda. Administrator Aludo?
Thank you, Commissioners. Actually, I'm going to turn it over to Assistant Administrator Brugan to walk through regular agenda item number one, which relates to a budget adjustment related to our capital improvement program.
This is what I hope is going to be a series of adjustments related to the capital program that you'll see in the weeks and months ahead, as we zero in on trying to wrap up some projects that have been lingering for a while and, and establish some new ones. These I highlighted two in the headline of your resolution that are actually having cost impacts. So what we're talking about here are about $16 million plus renovations and new construction for our animal shelters. Both renovations to the Dane Shelter in Northside and setting the table for a new shelter that we'll be, we'll be seeing more information about in the few weeks ahead. And then the other piece that actually has a cost impact is just a closeout of some engineering costs related to a furnishings project at the Alston-Dunk building that is, is not moving forward any further. There's lots of other pieces in here that involve closing out old projects or reclassifying advances, but all of those are dollar neutral or dollar positive. So they're not highlighted in the title of the resolution.
Thank you. I have two comments. One is related to the fact that we are moving forward on the animal care facilities. The Dane is kind of what I would, I term an annex. So it's an additional facility, because we have so many animals. I just read an article in the paper today, it's in Louisville, that they are having such trouble, because they have such an influx of animals, dogs in particular, and they just, there's nowhere to go with them. And so Dane was our answer to that. It needs some renovation, because it's not fully equipped to do what we're asking it to do. And so I'm glad that this money is moving forward. And then the second piece of this then is the new shelter that we intend to build, so that we have a facility that not only the animals can enjoy, but also the volunteers and the employees can enjoy, because we've got some kind of rough circumstances right now. So I'm very glad that these are moving forward expeditiously. I hear quite a bit about this, Commissioner Dimas, I'm sure you do as well. So I'm, I'm very glad to see these on our agenda and, as I said, moving forward. The second thing is, I, I got a little chuckle, John, out of the first item, the Ohio River Walk, where we are making an adjustment for one penny. So if anybody is worried about the county finances, we are down to the penny.
We are indeed, to close out a project that can't have a balance.
I got to tell you something.
It's a penny adjustment.
I went to your office, I'm like, is this correct? And they're like, down to the penny, my friend. I'm like, all right, good. So thank you for bringing that and I'm glad you're paying that much attention to the county budget. Commissioner Summer Dimas?
Yes, just one question, John, on the animal shelter. What portion of the 16.2 is renovations?
The six, the six two is renovation to Dane. The other 10 is just setting the, starting to set the table on the financing for that newer shelter.
All right. That's all I had. Thanks.
Okay. I will move that we approve of item number one.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dimas?
Yes.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. By leaves, or I'm sorry, regular agenda items two and three relate to MSD. I believe I saw Lauren, there she is, she was behind the pillar.
Good afternoon.
Welcome.
Good afternoon. Lauren DiGaresia for MSD. I also have with me Deputy Director Ryan Welsh today. Just a couple of items on the regular agenda. Item two is legislation to appropriate additional funds for the construction of MSD's Little Miami Waste Water Treatment Plant, solids disposal with odor control project, which is the largest project in our 2024 CIP. We're requesting appropriation of an additional $12,158,757 at this time to fund an early work package to purchase equipment packages. The purpose of this project is to upgrade solids handling at the Little Miami plant, primarily by installing an anaerobic digester, which will transform wastewater solids to biogas and biosolids for beneficial reuse. The biogas will be reused onsite as a renewable energy source to run certain plant operations. This will reduce reliance on trucking and landfilling solids, as well as on the electric grid, and just overall reduce our carbon footprint. Upgraded odor control for the plant is also an important component of the project. This is a large project, as I think you noted last time we were here, Commissioner Drehouse, and an important one for the district and the community as a whole. So we're excited that it's progressing. We have been keeping our website MSDGC.org updated. It's under our featured projects. So if anybody from the public would like to get more information, there's a lot of good information. Renderings, graphics that explain what this improvement will entail. And then we also have item number three.
Can I stop you for one second?
Sure.
I just asked a question related to timing. So this allocation is moving forward. And by the way, this is in our budget that we've already approved of, right? So we're just moving the money forward for this particular project. So when can the people in this community expect to have this fully online?
I believe at this time, the schedule is for construction to complete in 2028. So it is, it's a long, long-term construction project.
Okay. Thank you.
And then item three is to authorize the execution of a release and settlement agreement between the county, the city and the contractor for MSD's CSO 125 stream separation project. Recommend approval of both and can take any questions at this time.
Okay. Commissioner Summer Dimas, any questions?
Well, yeah, item two, assistance and revised general plan is already allocated, but I don't remember the initial cost. I don't believe it was $12 million.
Right. So we're, we're coming multiple times for construction legislation. The board already approved the first one for 4.5 million back in June. This one is for a little over 12 million. So we're well within the 174.4 million that was allocated in the 2024 CIP. So we will be coming back with a couple more work packages in the coming months.
Okay. I'm going to move that we approve of items two and three.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dimas?
Yes.
Thank you. Thanks, Lauren. Thanks for being here. All right. Let's move into the consent agenda.
Thank you, Commissioners. Consent agenda today, items four and five are the actions of the administrator through March of 2024. Item number six is a resolution authorizing the recognition of Operation Green Light honoring Ohio veteran, Hamilton County, Ohio veterans, October through Veterans Day of 2024. Item number seven is authorizing the issuance of $140,000 in sewer assessment debt. Item number eight is a resolution authorizing the filing of our annual information statement for the year ending December 31st, 2023. Item number nine is a budget adjustment for 1.55 million in non-departmentals, the clerk of courts, as well as in state, in our stadium department, as well as in planning and development. Item number 10 is a resolution authorizing a grant agreement with the city of Sharonville. This is authorizing a $1 million grant agreement with Sharonville for their convention center capital improvements. Item number 11 is an agreement for medical services at River City Correctional Center for $112,320. Item number 12 is a resolution authorizing the purchase of two Dodge Chargers in the sheriff's office for $55,524. Item 13 is a resolution authorizing an agreement with Executive Information Services and the board on behalf of the sheriff's office for replacement of the jail management system and the sheriff's office at $2.1 million. Item 14 is a resolution accepting purchase orders of the county in the amount, in total in the amount of $490,385. Item 15 is a resolution authorizing the purchase of a Chevy Traverse and, as a replacement on behalf of the sheriff's office for $32,645. Item 16 is a, is a resolution authorizing the purchase of a 2024 Toyota RAV4 Hybrid as a replacement and Hamilton County Environmental Services. Item 17 is a resolution authorizing the purchase of a 2024 Toyota Camry Hybrid as a replacement on behalf of Environmental Services for $29,652. Item number 18 is a resolution authorizing the award of ITB 029-24 and an agreement with Graybach LLC related to the, the freight elevator refurbishment at Paycor Stadium as a part of the pre-renovation projects, $990,000. Item 19 is a then and now with Hamilton County Facilities and Johnson Controls in the amount of $6,302. Item 20 is a communication from Mr. Mark Klein regarding an easement for overhead electric facilities crossing Loosster Pike. We have two items from Environmental Services. The first is item 21. This is in agreement with So Valley and the Department of Environmental Services for $50,000. It's a grant for fabric recycling. Item 22 is a similar grant agreement with Ohio Valley Goodwill for $61,743.92 for textile, for the expansion of textile recycling. Item 23 is a resolution adding a senior building manager position to the organization in county facilities. That is related to the Hillcrest facility. Item 24 is a resolution authorizing the settlement of a workers' compensation claim in the amount of $75,000 through Human Resources. Item 25 is a resolution approving the tentative, tentative collective bargaining agreement between the board and, excuse me, the board and Job and Family Services, AFSMI, or the American Federation of State, County and Municipal Employees, representing various JFS classifications. Item 26 is a resolution approving tentative collective bargaining agreement between the board and the Central Midwest Regional Council of Carpenters, representing the carpenters and carpenter foremen in county facilities. We have several JFS items. Item number 27 is an amendment with Women Helping Women for Domestic Violence Services program, programming in the amount of 1.277 million. Item 28 is a renewal with Easter Seals for peer mentoring and supportive services within peer mentoring and supportive services within the Benefit Bridge Program for 1.362 million. Item 29 is a renewal with Kemper Shuttle for transportation services and children's services, uh, for 949,320. Item 30 is an agreement with Every Child Succeeds for Parent Visitation Services. Uh, that's in the amount of 9,800. Item 31 is a renewal, uh, with Carrington Youth Academy for Residential Treatment Services for 775,000. Item 32 is renewal, uh, with Cornell Abraxas Group, uh, for residential treatment services, 775,000. Item 33 is a renewal with Eastway Corporation for Residential Treatment Services at 165,000. Item 34 is a renewal with SJO Kids, uh, for residential treatment services at 900,000. Item 35 is a resolution authorizing an amendment with Women Helping Women for Gender-Based Domestic Violence Education Training Services at 400,000. Item 36 is a renewal with the Village Network, uh, for residential treatment services, uh, at 275,000. And we have previously taken care of item 37, Commissioners. Uh, item 38 is a resolution authorizing, um, a CDAP grant with the city of Chiviet, uh, for 300,000. Item 39 is a resolution authorizing a CDAP grant, uh, with the village of Addison for, also for 300,000. Uh, item 40 is a resolution authorizing a, um, uh, the Veteran Services Commission, uh, for use of credit cards, uh, in the total amount of 48,000. And that is the end of the consent agenda, Commissioners.
All right. Thank you very much. Um, I just have a couple of things just to highlight. Um, item number 13, where you talk about, uh, the jail information system. Just wanted to note that, uh, recently, the sheriff has been talking about the, um, improvements over in the Justice Center, namely, related to the windows, related to the locks, and making the environment more secure for the inmates, more secure for staff. And she's talking about that in co, in the context of recruiting people, uh, sheriff's deputies in particular to work in the Justice Center. So I just want to highlight that this is yet another investment in the Justice Center to make sure that we are doing what we need to do to, uh, keep the inmates and the staff safe and, and help the cause by way of recruiting sheriff's deputies to work in that facility. So, and I appreciate her, uh, being out on Front Street highlighting some of these investments. Um, also, I, I just wanted to note that we've got a couple of items related to Women Helping Women. Uh, one is related to the divert program, which we are both very familiar with and supportive of. And then the other one is related to the education in schools, um, for young people to help them understand healthy relationships and have appropriate responses to, um, domestic violence when they encounter that. Uh, both of these bubbled up from the Commission on Women and Girls, and I just wanted to note that we're continuing to support those programs. Uh, and that, and, and lastly, I, I can't help but, uh, comment to the hybrid vehicles. We've, have some hybrid vehicles here. Um, so that is a nice shift in the right direction. Of course, Environmental Services are the ones purchasing the vehicles, but they are leading by example. And so I'm very grateful for that, and just did wanna, uh, note that on our calendar. Commissioner Summer Demas?
Thank you. Just a couple of comments. Um, item number 10, uh, the grant agreement with the city of Sharonville for 1 million. As we move forward to construct our convention center downtown, we are, uh, fulfilling our commitment to Sharonville not to forget about them and to make sure that we continue to support them. And I'm just really excited about, um, the grant agreement with the city of Sharonville. Just a couple of other things. Um, item 25 and 26, um, it's always important, and it, we're really happy about the collective bargaining agreements that have been reached, uh, with, um, the Job and Family Services and also the Regional Council of Carpenters. So I'm really happy about the work that our staff has done and also the unions that have done to come together with a agreement that everybody could, um, agree to. Um, so, and also for JFS, I always have to bring them up. There are 10 items, I counted, uh, that deal with treatment and services for our young people and some of our older people. And it just shows how we are adequately using our levy dollars to do the things we need to do to make our community better. And lastly, um, item 40, uh, the Veteran Services Commission. Jeff, I was just wondering, the credit card and, that we're giving them, is that the first time, uh, 40, 40, $48,000 credit card limit? Have we ever had a credit?
I believe they have, Commissioner. Um, uh, I, I can't say whether that limit is the same. That's probably the, uh, the total of their, of, of a monthly limit. Um, but I don't believe it's the first time that they've had it. I can check on that and confirm it, though.
Okay, I'd like to know. Thank you. Cause I know they had been a little in disarray. So, thank you. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you very much. Um, so I'm gonna move that we approve of items four through 36 and items 38 through 40.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Demas?
Yes.
Well, there we go. Uh, is there anything else for the good of the cause?
Have nothing.
All right. Uh, I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Demas?
Yes.
Thank you.